Good evening, and welcome to our board meeting for Tuesday, October the 17th, 2017. I would like to call this meeting to order, and I will ask trustee, student trustee Christina, to lead us in our opening prayer and national anthem and oath of citizenship. Thank you Christina.
Good evening, everyone. Please join me in the sign of our faith, in the name of Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. On this, the International Day for the Eradication of Poverty, we pray. Jesus our Shepherd, acquit us that may we recognize you in the faces of vulnerable and feel their pain as if it was our own. Guard us against the lure of easy answers and quick fixes. Open our minds to envision the solutions to the problems of our time. Strengthen us with the endurance to make us, your will be done, here on earth as it is in heaven. A reading from the Gospel according to Matthew. Then the righteous will answer, Lord, when it was that I saw you hungry and gave you food, or thirsty and gave you something to drink? And when was it that I saw you a stranger and welcomed you, or naked and gave you clothing? And when was it that we saw you sick or in prison and visited you? And the king will answer them, truly I tell you, just as you did it to me, just as you did it to one of the least of these, who are the members of my family, you did it to me. Thirty years today, Father Joseph, launched the call to action against extreme poverty. He declared, wherever men and women are condemned to live in extreme poverty, human rights are violated. To come together to ensure that these rights can be respected is our solemn duty. The Camaraderie of Stone at the Tridaco Human Rights Plaza in Paris placed in memory of these states. On the 17th of October, 1987, defenders of human and civil rights from every continent gathered on this plaza. They paid homage to the victims of hunger, ignorance, and violence. They affirmed that their conviction that human misery is not inevitable. They pledged their solidarity with all the people who throughout the world strive to eradicate extreme poverty. Let us pray that we may envision and have the courage to make up this call to action our own. Let us entrust to the Lord, who hears our cries, our own needs and the needs of all the people. The response is, Lord, hear our prayer. For the church, called to be a sign of Christ's presence in our world, we pray to the Lord. For the leaders of countries and corporations, called to use their power for the common good, we pray to the Lord. For the poor, the marginalized, and the silenced, we pray to the Lord. For the sick, that they may experience consolation and healing, we pray to the Lord. For those who have died, they are reborn to eternal life, we pray to the Lord. Christ has no body but yours, no hands, no feet on earth but yours. Yours, the eyes in which he looks, compassion on this world. Yours are the feet with he walks to do good. Yours are the hands which he blesses to all the world. Yours are the hands, yours are the feet, yours are the eyes, and you are his body. In the name of Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you, thank you Christina. We would like to share with all present our motions adopted in camera. Trustee Danko.
Thank you Chair Rabinda. One motion adopted in camera was one regarding property. Another motion received in camera were that Acting Department Head Natasha Kuzmar was appointed at the head of Health and Physical Education at Assumption Catholic Secondary School effective October 5th, with an end date of no later than August 31st, 2018. Also related to hiring, Martha Clipperton hired as a probationary teacher effective October 10th, Stefano Gregorio hired as a probationary teacher effective October 6th, and Alessandra Santa Guida hired as a probationary teacher effective October 12th. Thank you.
Thank you. With regard to the agenda, I will be asking if there are any additions to the agenda. I would like to add an item under 11, miscellaneous information. The item will be 11.3, and it will be trustee reminders of upcoming dates. So I'll talk to you about that when we get down to that area. Are there any other additions to the agenda? Okay. Sorry? Oh yes, thank you for reminding me. I would like to move Staff Reports 9.1, Recommendation from the French Ad-Hoc Committee, up to number four, Presentations. This committee has done a tremendous amount of work on our behalf, and I would like to see that they go home a little earlier than they would otherwise. So if we could put that in the place of number four, Presentations, that would be appreciated. Can I have a mover for the agenda, please? Trustee Quinn, seconded by trustee Marai. All in favor? Thank you. Declaration of Conflict of Interest? None. So now we move to Presentations. So I will ask the Director to start the process. Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair. I will begin, and then I will pass it over to the Chair of the Ad-Hoc Committee. So why did we actually undertake a review of our French programs? And I'll give you a little background on that. In 2013, the Halton Catholic District School Board began an early French immersion pilot program, offered in four regional sites to students beginning in grade one. In 2016, our board undertook a French sustainability study to review the ongoing sustainability of the pilot program. The French Sustainability Report to the Trustees in December of 2016 identified challenges in delivering the early French immersion program. So trustees therefore asked for an ad hoc committee to be established to develop a multi-year plan to address these challenges identified by the French Sustainability Report. And at this time, I would like to introduce the Chair of the French Ad-Hoc Committee, Mr. Rudy Daudel. Rudy will walk the trustees through the review process and the recommendation of the Ad-Hoc Committee. Welcome Rudy.
Good evening, everybody. As Paula mentioned, my name is Rudy Daudel. I'm a parent of two boys in the board, and I am the Chair of the French Program Review Ad-Hoc Committee that was struck by the board. So we're here to present to you the work of the committee over the last eight months, and the recommendation for the ongoing provision of optional programs at the school board. So the summary of the process of what, how we got here today. And the Ad-Hoc Committee consisted of 18 parents, two school principals, teachers, a student, two trustees, Vice Chair Rice, and trustee Jan Tomaso. Chair Rabinda also attended every meeting as ex officio. I'd like to acknowledge the membership of the Ad-Hoc Committee and all the work and dedication that all members have put into this committee leading up to the presentation today. Specifically, I'd like to mention the parent representatives on the Ad-Hoc Committee. A few of them are here, I think Mark, there's a few of them are here tonight, and I'd like to mention their names and ask that they stand when I call their names. There's only two of them here today, but I believe we'd like to mention all the names tonight. So Gail Merritt-Murrell, Samuel Guavera, Mark Fentes, Mark Lebrun, Thomas Mortorano, Michael Oak, Jennifer Stiefling, Solomon Edigba, Darlene Gingrich, Kaiser Agbar, Christina Petrovic, Kirsten DePatt, Dora Mogambi, Roger Parent, Marwan Deeb, Tara Hambley, Diana Farcos, Elizabeth McIntyre, Claire Lenoir, Sarah Fabiani, Vanessa Lee, Brenda Agnew, Ingrid Schwetz. And I think that covers everybody. They should all be commended for the many hours of work that they will put in, the ability to work together, share views. We all came from very different mindsets into this committee, and I am, and I'm sure as they are, proud of the work that we've put together in terms of the presentation and the recommendations that we'll share with you today. So to restate the mandate of the French Ad-Hoc Committee, there were two parts to the mandate as was directed by the Board of Trustees. Number one is to prepare a multi-year plan for an early French immersion program that will endeavor to address and resolve all of the ongoing issues that have been presented by senior staff. And number two was to make recommendations to trustees as to the future of French immersion with a view of moving early French immersion program from pilots to a sustainable and permanent program. So staff constantly throughout the process kept reminding us of the mandate and helped to try to keep us focused on that. The Ad-Hoc Committee met on eight separate occasions between February and October 11th, and we reviewed tons of topics. They really were anchored and categorized around four themes. The first one was the Ministry of Education requirements for French as second language programming. Second was the staffing and recruitment process that's undertaken by the Board for hiring French teachers. The third is the issue of equity, as it pertains to accessibility to all students and early intervention. And number four, the issue of special education staffing support for the optional French programs. Each of these four topics were reviewed and discussed in great details at the meetings, and the details of these discussions and presentations can be viewed in the meeting notes and presentations that are on the board's website under French Program Review. Of all the topics that were reviewed, the French Ad-Hoc Committee felt that there was, there were two of these that were the most, or provided the most compelling information as it relates to the mandate of the committee, and the two were the ministry programming requirements and the staffing and recruitment. So the, just to, in terms of nomenclature, the French, FSL refers to all French as second language programs offered at the board. There are currently three programs being offered at the board. Core French, which is the ministry, which is what the ministry mandates for all students between grade four and nine. Currently, there are two other optional FSL programs at the board, distinguished by the hours of exposure to the language and the level of intensity. So Core French is 40 minutes a day of French language instruction, grade four entry point, and mandatory for all students between grade four and nine. The early French immersion is four periods a day of instruction in French. Students study the French language and learn other content areas in French, science, social studies, arts, physical education, and health, grade one entry point, 3,800 hours by the end of grade eight. It's an optional, limited enrollment program, and it's administered at four regional sites, one site currently being phased out. The third program is Extended French, three periods of instruction in French. Students learn the French language and learn other content areas in French, science, social studies, history, geography, one or two of the arts. It's a grade five entry point, 1,260 hours of instruction by the end of grade eight. It's also an optional, limited enrollment program, currently administered at nine regional sites, one being phased out. The current enrollment for both optional programs currently at the board is 184 for early French immersion and 540 for Extended French. So many of us came into this committee not understanding how some boards are not facing, why is it only Halton Catholic Board that's facing the staffing shortages that were presented to the board last year? But we quickly found out there were actually two key factors for this, the first being that our teachers must be Catholic, so that diminishes the pool of French qualified teachers who are Catholic. But the second important factor was the fact that only, that this board is one of few school boards in Ontario that offers two optional programs. All others offer one optional program at most. So there's a quote here from the Ontario College of Teachers in 2016 that recognizes the shortage of FSL-qualified teachers that are being, that are coming through the school system. And some statistics around that in terms of the actual graduations in Ontario, in faculties and others, that are registered through the college in the years 2013 to 2016, and 2017 and 18 down to 450 forecasted graduations per year. You'll notice a dip in 2016 to down to 215, and that's because 2016 was the year that the Ontario College of Teachers changed the program from one to two years program. But you'll see that there is a decline in overall number of graduates through the, with the French qualification. So if we look at 2018, there are 450 teachers that are expected to graduate. We know that approximately 31% of those, or a third of those, are Catholic. So that limits the pool down to about 150 Catholic FSL teachers that are available to be hired by 72 boards in Ontario. So how do we recruit? The, I mean, it's a very complex process that we'll get into in a minute, but the idea here is that there is an ongoing external posting for French teachers on the Applied to Education website. Board staff attend teacher recruitment fairs each year. This year, they'll be attending 12, both within and outside of the province of Ontario. The regulation that's currently in place prohibits HR staff to hire on the spot, but what HR staff can do is track these students until graduation in the hope that they'll come and apply and be interviewed. It is a challenge for boards in Ontario in general to secure candidates from other provinces, and as with any other industry, reasons most cited is the cost of living in Ontario, relocation, moving away from family. That said, human resources staff continue to actively try to recruit from Quebec and Nova Scotia, but have not been very successful in doing that. So the committee learned in detail what the hiring process entailed after the current regulations. It's a very complicated and cumbersome process. Well, I'll quickly go through the highlight of that process. So typically, a teacher candidate will submit their application online. In order to apply for a French position within the board, applicant must be Catholic and have FSL qualification. Anybody who applies will be, with these qualifications, will be interviewed in both English and French to determine the language proficiency. Successful candidates will be placed on the occasional teacher roster, and at that point they can start supply teaching. The problem here is in step number one, is that there isn't enough applicants coming in through step one of the process. So what else could be done other than hiring qualified teachers who are Catholic? There are options with the Ministry of Education. A board must apply for a letter of permission if it intends to hire an uncertified individual to teach in the classroom in cases where no certified teacher has applied or accepted the position. There's also a temporary letter of approval for a period of up to one year that authorizes a school board to assign or appoint a teacher who does not have the required qualifications. The committee felt that these are not options for this board, as everybody would agree that we want qualified, certified teachers teaching our kids every day. So after months of really deep dives in terms of all the data and the reports and the presentations and the exercises that the committee did, I'd like to summarize the key findings of the committee. So no need to state it further, there is a French teacher staffing crisis across the province. It is more challenging to find Catholic FSL-qualified teachers, and we're talking about a potential 150 graduates who are Catholic, FSL-qualified, that will be grabbed by 72 potential boards across the province. We are one of few school boards in Ontario that offer two optional programs, and it'll become even more difficult to staff our FSL classes as the early French immersion program continues to expand from year fours, from year four onwards. So on September 12th, the Ad-Hoc Committee came to the conclusion that two optional French programs cannot coexist at Halton Catholic District School Board, and came up with two possible options, and with that lands on, option one is to maintain the early French immersion program, gradually phase out the extended French program, and this would take four years to phase out, and that any students who are currently enrolled in the extended French would complete the program and graduate in grade eight, so they'd be grandfathered until completion of the program. The second option is to maintain the extended French program and gradually phase out the early French immersion program. This would take eight years to phase out, and again, any students who are currently enrolled in the French, in the early French immersion program would continue and complete the program and graduate in grade eight. So the fact that two optional programs cannot coexist, one has to, one can remain, the other has to get phased out. The committee went through a rather lengthy discussion and decided to go by a vote, and the committee decided to put forward a recommendation of option number two, which is maintaining the extended French program, gradually phasing out the early French immersion program. And I'll speak a bit to the rationale of why that was the option of choice. The fact that there is shortage with the option two, the extended French program, fewer teachers are needed over time. With the freed-up capacity of the phasing out of the early French immersion, it will likely be possible to expand the extended French program as well as the core French programs over time, whether in terms of entry year or the number of sites that it's administered at. The early French immersion program was always a pilot program. The extended French program has been in existence for 30 years. And this option, option two, makes it easier for Catholic schools to meet the ministry's mandate of providing 60 minutes per day for math instruction. And this option slightly enhances the equity issue because it allows more students, as we saw earlier, to participate in the, in an optional French program relative to what the early French immersion program would have done. So based on the committee's request, staff put together a multi-year plan that would look at staffing projections for the phasing out of the early French immersion program. And it's important to note that the, this table here does not factor in any expansions, thank you, any expansions of the extended French program or the core program, and I think that's something that has to be explored later as we continue to phase out one program and look at the capacity of teachers. And this table is in Appendix A in the report that was submitted. So at the end of that process, in terms of formulating our recommendation, committee felt very strongly that we should go back to the, to the parents, to the community, and test out what presented them, what recommendation we put forward, and highlights of all the extensive information that we were presented with. We prepared a webinar that described at high level the process, all the factors that were considered, the options, and the recommendation. There was a link to an online survey that was provided at the end to gather parents' feedback. The survey was open for a one-week period from October 4th to 11th, and the results are attached as Appendix B in the report. There was an overwhelming response, quite a bit of interest in the, in terms of response, and the breakdown of the key themes in terms of open-ended comments are also part of the Appendix B. So in summary, this is all what we would like to present to you today. I'd really like to acknowledge the work of the committee, as well as the tremendous amount of work that staff have put in through that whole process. I personally and the committee agrees that we found them extremely, extremely knowledgeable, very forthcoming, very supportive and transparent, and that made our job much easier. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Happy to take any questions?
Questions for Mr. Chair? Trustees, do you have any questions? Trustee Caravalla.
Hello, I'm over here. Thank you for your report. I'm just wondering, you were talking about you had a vote, and what were the numbers in the vote that were for the recommendation?
So the vote was based, and again, Mark, please help me here, it was based on who was present and that, and there was quorum, and I think it was about a two-thirds and a third.
About two-thirds and a third.
Two-thirds and a third.
Two-thirds, okay.
Two-thirds supporting the recommendation.
Thank you. Trustee Intermasti.
I just, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank the committee because I know that this was a grueling exercise, and I know it puts them at odds in their own communities with people who thought perhaps things were going to go one way and that the recommendation may not be coming out in ways that people understand, and there was just so much detail in here, and in the conversations that isn't necessarily out in public, and I just want to encourage the system to read what's on the website. But really, truly from my heart, thank you so much because the conversations were open and frank, and I don't think anything was left on the table when you people finished walking out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Michael.
Through you, Madam Chair. Do we have a copy of this presentation in our packages?
I believe so.
I see.
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Trustee Quinn.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much for that report and all the hard work by the committee. I'm wondering if you could tell me a little bit about the conversation regarding the potential loss of students to our co-terminist board, should option two be chosen, and perhaps what some of the dissenting opinions were amongst the committee members that either would have asked to maintain both options or to choose option one over option two?
I'll start with the second part of the question. I think there was, there was full recognition at the committee level that there is no way to maintain two, and it was really a matter of which of the two, there was strong belief that both programs offered great value, and there that both programs offered great value, and there was a lot of debate about, uh, which of the two programs, um, not, uh, in terms of to phase out. I think with the, uh, with the qualifications or the, the justification that we've put forward, a lot of it anchored around the fact that it improves equity, improves access, 540 versus a smaller number, a significantly smaller number, and the, uh, the fact that, uh, this was the pilot program that, uh, were, the mandate did call for us to really focus on how can we make it a permanent program, but it was out of the two. It was the pilot program, and the other one had been well-established and, uh, continued for the last 30 years. Um, but otherwise, there was tons of, um, you know, healthy tension and healthy debate around, uh, the two schools of thought, and it was quite balanced on both sides.
Mark, anything you want to add to that?
Through you, Mr. Chair and Madam Chair. Uh, one other thing that was considered to be a factor as well is the fact that there are families that did not apply for the early French immersion program over the last four or five years, uh, given the fact that they were thinking more long-term with the recognition that there was an option to enter an optional French program at the grade five level. If we were to take that away from them, if it were phased out to the extended French program, then one of the things that would do is that would take those families who were thinking more long-term felt that they, their children or students were not yet ready or capable of handling or not, you know, didn't have that mindset yet to enter a French immersion program, and they were thinking more long-term, and if we take that away from them at this point, um, one of the concerns, and I speak on behalf of other committee members here, one of the concerns was that taking that away from them, they would no longer have any option at all of entering the French program because they were lack of.
Attrition. Um, Paula.
Excuse me, uh, go ahead. I'm not sure that we all heard Trustee Quinn's question. Uh, could you repeat it, please, with your, and then I think-
It was, uh, asked already, just was, I was just reiterating what the, what the comments around the committee were regarding the possible attrition of students to the co-terminus board if we chose one over the other.
And I think the Director wants to respond.
Through you, Madam Chair. Um, to Trustee Quinn, that wasn't part of our mandate, and it was enough for us to just study what was in, in our board and, and what our needs were. Um, we didn't have all the, um, the details on the co-terminus, uh, board and where they were offering, what grades, uh, we, and we, that wasn't what we, we, it was enough work for us to do just to study our board, so we didn't consider that as part of the mandate.
Okay. Superintendent Pocassan?
Through you, Madam Chair. Um, certainly just a minor addendum. Uh, we, we are aware that, uh, that our co-terminus board is changing its, uh, registration procedures effective September 2018, and the programs will be delivered, uh, beginning in grade two and will be 100% in French.
Any other questions from the trustees? Trustee Danko?
Uh, Chair Rabenda, what evidence did the committee examine to support the idea that, uh, that there's a lack of qualified people?
Uh, who would like to answer that? Qualified teachers?
I can, I can certainly start. Uh, we have, um, not only gone out to, uh, pretty much every, uh, faculty within Ontario, uh, but we also did go to McGill and to, um, out, out east to Nova Scotia to, uh, try to recruit people that were available. Uh, the Ontario College of Teachers does put data out, which you saw on that chart, around, uh, what they're anticipating in terms of the availability of, of French teachers. And again, that's, uh, that's public record. Uh, so we, we, and you have heard our efforts in terms of a continuous posting, and, uh, we continue to interview, uh, every person who's qualified, uh, and Catholic in French. We, we interview those people immediately. Um, and what I can tell you is that we have exhausted, uh, that search. Thank you.
Uh, the committee asked questions, and they told the staff what they would like in terms of resources. So Executive Officer O'Hara and some of his staff would present on the HR figures when they were asked, uh, as did other personnel.
And that was one of the first key points that we, we had asked for early on in the committee 'cause we knew that this was a key, uh, factor in the challenges, and we'd asked for quite a bit of information early on, and, um, um, that was the first order of business, really.
Paula, what? Trustee Danko?
Well, Chair Rabenda, I see a lot of assumptions being made, assumptions about how many of those graduating teachers may or may not be Catholic, um, not backed up by any, any facts or statistics. I mean, um, apparently we have teachers in our board from all over the world, and Halton is a great place to live. Oakville's a great place to live, and we go through a lot of effort to find and recruit students to come from other countries to our board. We, we go to great lengths. We go to great extent. We send, we send superintendents to other countries to bring students here. Um, I, I, I don't see anything in this committee report, which was a lot of work, and I'm not, uh, saying anything against the participants who worked on this committee, but I don't see any difference in what we were told a year ago. Um, so, uh, I mean, we go through a lot of effort, like I say, to recruit students, to bring students here from other countries. Canada's a great place to live. We know that we have teachers who come to work for us from other countries already. Um, so I'm really, I'm at a loss to understand why that we're facing such a shortage.
Okay. Who would like to answer that? Trustee, sorry, Executive Officer O'Hara answered.
Uh, and, and what I would indicate, again, through you, is that we do go through, uh, a lot of lengths to try to attract, uh, French teachers to our board. Um, again, when you go to a teacher recruitment fair, we're one of the few boards that actually hit all of the, uh, recruitment fairs. Most boards don't do the amount of recruiting that we do. Uh, next year, we're also planning on going to, uh, New Brunswick to try that particular, um, uh, province as well. The reality is, when we speak to other boards who have, just like ourselves, who have gone to other provinces, and the reality is, is we're not attracting people to come for various reasons. And one of the biggest reasons, as was indicated, is the cost of living, uh, in southern Ontario, and, uh, that's a reality. Uh, we, uh, certainly go, uh, to every length to try to, uh, bring people and attract people to come to our board, and we've been fairly successful in that. But the success is measured. The success is trying to go and make sure that we have enough to do the things that we're doing currently. Uh, we, and, and with that, we struggle trying to go and find replacements for sick leave, for the pregnancy parental leaves, and all of those other ones that we know are coming. So, um, I, I do think that we do go above and beyond. We'll continue to do that to try to fill our needs as best we can.
And I guess that the issue is compounded by the fact that we have two programs, two optional programs.
Correct, Madam Chair, and, and again, the, the, uh, Halton Catholic is not the only board that experiences these shortage, that has experienced these shortages, and I think that, um, the, the data that we were given shows that it's across the entire province, compounded by the fact that there are two boards. And, and as was mentioned already, the, the outcome is what's really speaks for itself, the fact that there has been classes over the last, as we've heard, uh, that, that did not have a qualified French teacher despite all the efforts from staff to recruit, uh, into these positions.
Thank you. Any other questions for the Mr. Chair? Trustee Carabella, I'm sorry, sir. Um, if you have a question, uh, you're asked to put it on paper and submit it. Did you already do that? Yes, we have one here. Is that yours? Yes, we'll get to that. Thank you. Um, Trustee Carabella?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. So just one of the points you said on the letter of approval. There was one that was a qualified teacher but didn't have their FSL train, training yet. Uh, but they would be, they could have been, basically, I understood that you didn't even look at that, that the staff doesn't even look at them to hire, but I'm thinking that, the way it was presented, that's what I understood, that that teacher could be hired and then take on the FSL qualifications.
So i- in terms of, of our recruitment approach, obviously, our, our, our hope, our desire is always to go and hire a qualified, certified French teacher, and that's what we, we seek. If we're not able to find a qualified, certified French teacher, then we have other options. They're not as desirable. Um, certainly, the better of the two would be to find a qualified, uh, or sort of certified teacher in Ontario, uh, who, um, certainly feels that they're able, and we feel that they're able to teach French, and, and, and request from the Ontario College of Teachers a temporary letter of approval. Uh, failing that, then we look at, basically, the only other option we have, and that's to find someone who is a, 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 a non-qualified teacher who we think has the ability with some, some assistance to be able to deliver the program, and they would not be a qualified teacher and were, or allowed, uh, with some evidence to the Ministry of Education to, to hire that person for one school year. So do we do that? Yes, we do do that. Uh, it's not our, our, uh, it's not desirable, but we have had to staff that way just to try to keep the wheels on within our system. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from trustees? Trustee Quinn?
Madam Chair, just, uh, perhaps it's a point of order, a question for you. Are, is the Chair of the Ad-Hoc Committee the only one who's able to speak to us at this meeting? Or could other members of the Ad-Hoc Committee add to this presentation? If, if the gentleman who had the question is a member of the committee, I'd be interested to hearing his input.
He's not a, a member of the committee, and our board's, um, guidelines and policies indicate, uh, certainly our practice indicates that we will read these questions at the end of the presentation. Normally, it will be at the end of the meeting, but because we don't wish to keep everyone here any longer than they have to be, we will read these questions at the end of the meeting. If we can answer them at the end of the meet, at, sorry, at the end of the presentation. If we can answer them at the end of the presentation, we will. Otherwise, the response will be sent to that individual if it takes more research. Oh, no. Trustee Danko?
Point of order, Chair Rabenda, you're not, this isn't a delegation, so it's a presentation by staff.
No, it's a presentation, it's a presentation by a committee.
It's a staff report.
It's a staff report, yes, it is. It's brought to you through the staff, yes, absolutely. But it is a presentation by a very talented committee led by an exceptional leader, and on behalf of the board, I would like to thank you most sincerely. I have sat in your meetings, and I have seen the difficulties and the challenges that you've had, grappling with the issues, and it was amazing how you all came together, uh, in your conclusions, whether those are conclusions that everyone accepts or not. I know that they were the result of tremendous work, tremendous input, and tremendous collaboration, and it's truly been an honor to have you as a committee for this board. So thank you to you and to your committee. Uh, the question? Okay. Go ahead.
Uh, th- thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Was there a proposal for a minority report to come forth to the board along with this recommendation?
This is the report of this committee. There will be delegations at the next meeting, and-
Chair, it wasn't, it wasn't a question for you, it was, it was for the, uh, for the Chair of this committee. Was there a discussion for, for there to be a minority, through you, a minority report submitted by the committee as well?
No.
No.
No. Um, we are working on these questions, and we're going to try and answer as many as we can at the end of the presentation, which we've come to. Uh, Madam Director, are there any that I can answer? Are you can answer?
There's, uh, through you, Madam Chair, there's one question. I think, uh, Superintendent Pocassan might have an answer to, if you want to read it.
Through you, Madam Chair. Um, regarding the French Review Committee report on the webinar presented to parents to explain the rationale behind the conclusion, it is stated that the extended French, um, is six, I, I'm sorry, I can't read the word, but it's, uh, it alludes to- Quite success, uh, for over 30 years. How is its success measured? And how does this measurement of its success compare to the outcomes of the EFI program? So I'll do my best to, uh, respond to that. Um, obviously, from the perspective of success, it's the ongoing interest in the program and the fact that it's grown to nine sites, uh, grades five to eight. Definitely, the academic assess of the students that are in the extended French program is evidenced through our report card data, um, as well as EQIO results. Um, our students in secondary are continuing on to the AP, often from an extended French background. And also, the common European framework testing, uh, called the DELF, um, has indicated that randomly selected extended French students in grade 12 are tested, and our students have rated and achieved and performed as well or higher than EFI graduates in the province or across Canada. So that's where we're at with that. As for comparing EFI to EF, at this point in time, there haven't been any strenuous, um, comparisons taking place because we have grade five extended of French for the first time, so perhaps there could be some comparisons drawn between grade five extended, um, French students and grade five early French immersion students, but the programs are distinct in a certain way, and comparisons perhaps would be more vibrant if they, we collected data from grade five to eight and compared the two. Again, as we've stated many times, there is no question about, um, the quality and the, uh, value of both programs. They are both successful, they are both valued, and certainly have contributed to a great interest in optional French programming in our board.
Thank you, Superintendent Pocassan. Now, the Director.
Through you, Madam Chair. Another question from the, from the floor. From the presentation, we're left with the impression the only path to hire teachers is to hire into a pool of occasional teachers rather than into full-time, and I believe I'll pass it over to Superintendent O'Hara.
Superintendent O'Hara?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. Uh, we, uh, we, we need to follow Regulation 274 under the Education Act, and that controls how, uh, boards are able to go and hire new teachers. And that regulation requires us to post any permanent positions internally to our LTO, uh, staff, and to see whether any of them are qualified and interested in, in that permanent position. After we've satisfied that, we can certainly go and hire individuals externally, and that's what we're doing. Uh, but certainly, we always have to make sure that we have offered, uh, FSL positions that are available, uh, through a posting process to our internal employees, uh, first.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions? No, and I, I guess there are none other down there? No? No, we have no other questions. Trustee Carabella?
The survey that was sent out to the parents, did that go to all parents of the school board?
Trustee Quinn?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, perhaps to, uh, Superintendent Pocassan. Is there a way that when this, uh, proposal comes, or this resolution comes as a, as a, an action item, that we could, uh, mandate or, uh, codify somehow how the program will be extended in the future? Because there's a, there's a maybe, and it could lead to, or eventually, there may be more students involved in extended French. Could we, could we guarantee that we'll be growing the program over the years somehow as we, uh, put the new policy into place?
Um, well, if the trustee wishes to make, uh, you know, a recommendation, if he wishes to propose a motion indicating something one way or the other, but you're looking at some sort of, um, strategy- strategy from the staff, indicating that, uh, you will see certain things happening?
Yeah, I think, through you, Madam Chair, that the, the indication in the report was that switching to Option Two, phasing out Option One, will leave the opportunity to have more extended French programming at some time in the future. But if it's at some time in the future, that can go a lot further down the road. So, is there a way we could put that into a proposal?
Um, certainly, anything can be put into a proposal, whether it can be executed, I guess, at the appropriate time, it's another issue. But in the, certainly, on the Escribe, uh, format, there was a number of dates listed, where they would look at the certain program in a certain year. I'm not sure if it's in the hard copy package, but it is on the online package. Twenty twenty-five? Okay, twenty twenty-five. Once the phase out is complete. Do you want to speak further to that, Madam Director? Okay, that's all they have at the moment. Okay. Anything? No?
Madam Chair, there is on, I believe it is page forty-three, Appendix A of your report, that does develop a phase-out plan, uh, for early French immersion through to grade eight, obviously completing the program, and when existing staffing would be available to be redeployed, uh, to other positions. And again, with regard to interest in extended French, uh, if there was an interest at a particular site where there was a minimum of twenty-four registrants for grade five, the program would be open, provided that there was staffing that was available. So, definitely, it was something within our discussion, uh, dependent upon staffing, and of course, interest, community interest in programming at a particular site.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other questions at all? Trustee Carabella?
Um, through you, Madam Chair, how does the staff feel if, when the, um, early French immersion would be phased out, like, because that's their career? Are they interested in staying and going to extended French? Or are they going to look for a career in early French immersion in another board?
I, I don't know whether Superintendent Paccason or Superintendent O'Hara wish to take that call.
Through you, Madam Chair, I think it's very hard to predict. We did have teachers present on our committee that were early French immersion teachers. Uh, the only information I can share with you that, insofar as interest, teacher interest has indicated, uh, we have been challenged to find teachers interested in teaching, uh, grade one to three, early French immersion, uh, throughout the process. Um, many of our teachers are more junior intermediate qualified, and, uh, grade five to eight seems to be, when staffing is available, um, somewhat easier to staff. Uh, so, insofar as how our early French immersion teachers feel, I can assure you that every French teacher in our board, um, is guaranteed to have a job wherever they see fit. Um, many of them actually prefer to teach at the secondary level, and so often, we are able to negotiate that they can begin in grades six, seven, and eight, um, before they go to secondary. So, it's, as it is hard to predict, uh, what interest is, uh, definitely, um, if you have your French qualifications, you can certainly be secure and very confident that you will have a job.
Any other questions from trustees? No? All right. Trustee Quinn?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, and maybe just as a devil's advocate to the, to the Chair of the committee, was there discussion around not phasing out EFI, but cancelling it, uh, right, or within a year or two, so that the teachers could be, uh, put into other, other programs where we are finding shortages, where we have mat leaves, and all the other things that are predicted? And those one hundred and eighty-four students currently in EFI would have to, uh, join the, the regular stream and wait to grade five?
Through you, Madam Chair, there is strong, uh, commitment on the committee level that kids who are in the system, that they will be taken through the entire completion of, um, of that program. That there was no consideration, uh, at, at all that we would cut them off midway through their program. Madam Chair?
Yeah. That would also, if I might add, the, for anyone that is currently in the program, in the pilot, it was deemed, if I understand correctly, it was deemed right off the bat.
That was, that was on both options, whether it was, uh, phase out this or that, the commitment was to keep, uh, the students continuing till the end.
Uh, that's been a practice of the board. They've never taken kids out of a program in the middle of it. They would take it through to the end of elementary school if that was the particular program, or the end of secondary. We never, uh, try to stop a child's program in the middle. No other questions? Question from Cara- Mr. Trustee Carabella?
Thank you. You've mentioned other boards around that were, were very unique, that we have the two optional programs. Can you tell me what the, uh, boards around us, what programs they have, then? Is it just extended, or just EFI, or just core? Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair, there was an extended document that listed every board with the programs that are currently offered. Is that part of the report? It's online, uh, on the, uh, the, the board, the committee notes. Can we, can we refer? Okay, thank you. There's, there's a document that lists all the boards with the programs they have.
Okay, I'll read this question. Uh, we will take it since we're still in conversation on it. "The presentation has given us the same findings as we had last year, and the same board recommendation to discontinue the early French program. However, we have not yet discussed the results of the survey done by parents, and that a majority of parents want the EFI program over the EF. How does the board intend to address this decision with that majority of parents?"
With the majority of, uh, sorry, with the majority of parents who wish the, uh, EFI program to continue. Can I start there? Can I?
Yes, please.
So, there was a lot of discussion at the committee level, at the purpose of the consultation. Because we had gone into extensive, um, data and information, uh, throughout the last ten months, or eight months, um, we did not, we, the, the decision of the committee was to, uh, put a recommendation forward, consult, gather feedback, present that, or have that as part of the report to the board. But it, the intent of the consultation was not to sway or to help the committee with the, with the recommendation. Um, we, I think the, the committee believes that we'll, we've provided the recommendation based on the information that we've reviewed. Um, the parents, um, at large, the community, did not have access to the same level of information. All they saw was the correlated summary at the webinar, uh, and that it would be up to the trustees, through the delegation process, to gather further feedback, and then look at the full picture in terms of making a decision.
Thank you, and we certainly encourage all interested parties, especially the parents, to read the, uh, full report of the Ad-Hoc Committee, which is online, under the board's, uh, website. Um, I, is there another question there? Is it coming soon? Please articulate it.
Sorry, we, you won't, you won't be on the microphone if you, it won't be recorded, so.
I should, I should remind you that, um, this particular meeting is being video and audio recorded, so.
So, thank you so much to you and all the committee members. I know you've done a lot of work. I know a lot of us wanted to be on the committee as well, so we appreciate the research you've done. Um, this is not to take away from that at all, but I just wanted a point of clarification from Superintendent Paccason, and as well, a question to the committee. You indicated that, first of all, I'm just curious what your sources for the proficiency level of EFI students versus extended French students in the Common European Language Framework? I know there are a variety of DELF examinations, A1, A2, B1, B2. Quite familiar with them myself, so I'm wondering which examination that is that the EFI and extended French students did just as well on? Because based on our research, and the research of Canadian parents for French, the proficiency levels of extend, um, French immersion students, early French immersion students, are far higher than those of extended French students. That said, there is A1, A2, those really basic levels. But to get to B2 generally, it's through an EFI program, um, and B2 is the level you need to teach. So, if you can clarify that, and my second question for the committee is why, I did read your report, and thank you very much for that. Why is it that this board is choosing to, has proposed to phase out early French immersion when other major boards, like the Toronto Catholic District School Board, according to your report, have chosen in favor of sunsetting the extended French program?
I'm not sure that that question can all be answered as quickly. We may have to have it sent to you. Give us, uh, your name and address, and we will make sure that information is sent to you. Pardon me? Uh, it's a question that you've sent in, so, um, but it has been, and it, it's an extensive question. It's not a, a one-answer question that you can come up with immediately. So, if you would give us your name and your address, that will be sent to you.
Point of order, Madam Chair, we should be having a conversation with the gallery.
I'm not, I'm not having a con- this conversation, all right? We accepted your question, uh, over and past the time allotment, and we will be happy to give that, uh, every attention. Your question was extensive. The superintendent will respond to you, and it will be sent to you. All right? Um, Trustee Michael, did you have something, and then Trustee Roe?
Um, I just want to be clear on what practices we've just newly adopted. I don't really know what's going on, or who's speaking. Maybe we could explain the new practices?
It isn't a new practice. This is a, an issue that is of particular interest. And because, uh, this, uh, group of people have stayed, there was a couple, a question, one more question, that was, uh, requested to come. We let it come orally, because it was quicker to do so. It was an exception to the practice. There is no new practice. When I accepted the question, I did not know that it was going to be as in-depth and require so much, uh, response, and that will be done in writing. Trustee Roe, did you have a comment?
Excuse me, I just want to know who that was. That was a parent. So, anyone can speak then this evening?
Um, no, that lady asked for a question. Okay, other people had questions too. She was on the tail end of the questions. Trustee Roe, did you have something to add?
Just following on, on Trustee Michael, the same question about point of order.
Okay, did I answer your question? Thank you. All right, so, Trustee Carabella, then we're moving on.
Okay, thank you. Um, I would be interested in to know the, the response she will have.
Oh, trustees will get that response.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, we will, uh, bring this to a conclusion. Trustees have had their questions answered at this point, and again, I would like to thank the committee. Do you have another question, Trustee Quinn?
Uh, I do, do we now, I, I want to put a motion forward to thank and disband the Ad-Hoc Committee for their, for all the hard work.
Um, I have already thanked them, um, but, um, I'm not sure we want to disband them at the moment. We may have another question or two for them, uh, but it will be done at the appropriate time if, uh, if that's where we're going in the next little while. So, we thank the committee very much for their, uh, I'm not willing to let them go, they're still good. Uh, but, uh, thank you so very much to the Chair and the Ad-Hoc French Committee, who have been absolutely amazing, and tremendous, uh, tremendous work and commitment. So, we do thank you on behalf of the board. Uh, so, the next step will be, uh, for invitations, for delegations, for our next meeting, which is November the seventh. Depending on the number of delegations we have, we may have to move to a school gym, and we'll know that as the delegations come in. There is a process that has to be followed for the delegations, and that is on the website, and anyone who needs additional assistance in getting that information can, uh, contact the Office of the Director of Education. So, we thank everyone who has been involved, uh, with this particular process and this very important issue. So, we'll now move on. So, uh, our guests, you're welcome to stay and, uh, hear the rest of the board meeting. Oh, certainly, we understand if you have, uh, you have little ones to get home to. Thank you very much. All right, trustees, we're now going to number six, six point one, Approval of the Minutes of the September nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen, Regular Board Meeting. Can I have a mover, please? Trustee Marai? Second up, please. Trustee Roe. Any questions pertaining to six point one? Nope, all right. All in favor? Thank you. Six point two, Minutes of the October third, two thousand and seventeen, Regular Board Meeting. Can I have a mover, please? Trustee Quinn, seconded by Trustee Ian Tomasi. Any questions to those minutes? Nope, all in favor? Thank you. Uh, business arising from previous meetings on page nineteen to twenty-three of your package? If I can find it. Those are basically, uh, let's see, the student trustees, the strategic planning, and, uh, the September the nineteenth, we have responses attached to Appendix A, and that, uh, we don't have a title in there, so maybe we could get a title in there, Madam Director, at some point, okay? There was no action on that. So, Action Items eight point one, Executive Compensation. This is a notice of motion from Trustee Marai. Trustee Marai, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Whereas executive compensation is one responsibility of the Halton Catholic District School Board, whereas taxpayers expect and are entitled to transparency in public sector compensation, be it resolved, the Halton Catholic District School Board develop an executive compensation policy by March two thousand and eighteen. It includes, but is not limited to, a framework of compensation for the Director and executive officers, and it provides trustees with final approval on all changes to annual compensation. If I may make a couple of comments, Madam Chair? Yeah, this is, uh, the, the responsibilities of trustees have been, uh, effectively stripped away by the province, one by one. We have very little responsibility, uh, basically, closing schools, contentious French debates, but certainly, we have responsibility, um, over how, uh, executive, uh, compensation looks, uh, like. And we, I, I think the key to this is really, uh, transparency, uh, from a, a public, uh, perspective. So, the goal of this motion is not too specific. Um, the, the goal is really, let's put this to policy, and discuss as a gr- group, uh, through a collaborative approach, what we'd like to see in executive, uh, compensation, uh, going forward, um, and, and provide a framework, uh, for the, for the Director to enact, uh, going forward. And I think that, um, we just went through a process that the ministry, uh, required us to, to go through on it, and I think that, uh, it sh- it was a good process, a fulsome process, um, but it showed, uh, we can better develop, um, that process with a framework. So, that's the goal that is out today, and, and the hope would be that you vote for this, so that we can then further discuss it at policy, and hash out any details, uh, that, uh, you'd like to see, uh, in it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, is there a mover for Trustee Marai's? Sorry, second up, second up, Trustee Michael. Uh, questions? Comments? Uh, yes, I can, yes. So, uh, do you want to go around the table, or? They can go around the table if they wish, no? Okay, Trustee Ian Tomasi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my only, uh, concern, or I don't know if a better word is for it, but, um, is that the, the ministry is obviously going to come up with something at some point, and we have to go along with whatever the ministry dictates by way of their, their ed act. So, whatever, whatever legislation comes out pertaining to this, will certainly override anything we do as a policy. So, I'm fine with generalities, but I, I, my only concern is I don't know how, how exactly we're going to end up framing something that the ministry could ultimately override. We would just have to go back and revamp it afterward.
Thank you. Trustee Michael?
I'm good with what's on the floor.
Thank you. Uh, Trustee Danko?
Madam Chair, the ministry doesn't legislate executive compensation.
We don't know what the ministry's going to do, Trustee Danko.
Well, they...
This is all uncharted, is what I-
They couldn't even pass, they, they, they could not even do their executive, uh, restraint legislation.
Only time will tell, and we don't know what that time will be. Okay. Christina? No? Trustee Roe?
Yeah, I'm okay with, um, framing a, um, a policy, and, and we- Yeah, I'm okay with framing a, a policy and, and we, we adjust policies all the time depending on what comes from Queen's part.
Trustee Anna Maria? Thank you. Trustee Quinn? No questions?
To your permission, Madam Chair, I want to confirm that it is the responsibility of the Board of Trustees to ensure compliance with the broader, Board's Executive Compensation Program, the Broader Public Sector Executive Compensation Act, also known as BPSCCA, Regulation 304/16, and the Executive Compensation Framework Directive and any other applicable directives that may be issued by the government in the future. And it's also the responsibility of the Board of Trustees to, among other things, approve salary increases for all designated executives, including supervisory officers. So in the present circumstances and in my view, the Board has two options. The Board could decide not to approve the motion as the role and scope of the authority of the Board of Trustees is expressly set out in legislation. As you're aware, there have been other instances where policies were not developed because legislation already dictated it must occur. On the other hand, if the Board of Trustees decide to pass the motion, the terms set out in the board motion and subsequent executive compensation policy should be consistent with the provisions set out in the BPSCCA, the regulation, and make reference to provisions in the legislation.
Thank you, Madam Director. Any questions to the Director? All right. Okay, so we're going for the vote then, so all in favor of Trustee Marai's? Okay, so it's unanimous? Trustee Quinn? So it's unanimous? Yes, Trustee Quinn? Well, it was, it was unanimous, but I'll go around if you want. You got it? Okay, all right, so is everyone? Okay. Well, it is on record. Let's just do it. Trustee Quinn?
In favor.
Trustee Anna Maria?
In favor.
Trustee Row? Trustee Christina? Trustee Danko?
In favor.
Trustee Marai?
In favor.
Trustee Michael?
In favor.
Trustee Ian Tomasi? Trustee Ingrid? Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Thank you. Okay, so that one is done. 8.2, 2-09, opening and closing exercises. Trustee Danko? I should say Chair Danko.
Chair Abenda, could you call another, someone else to move and second this one?
Of course, it's your one, yes, okay. All right, can I have a mover please for that one? The exercises, Trustee Ian Tomasi? Seconded by Trustee Carabella? Okay. Any speaking to this? Any thoughts of wisdom?
Madam Chair, this is an amended policy for opening and closing exercises. The main change here is that it will no longer require staff to recite the oath.
All right, thank you. Trustee Quinn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I know we discussed this at length in the Policy Committee and in the in-camera session at the Policy Committee. And I'm considering proposing the amendment to drop the oath requirement altogether on the grounds that if, as it says, certain unionized employee groups don't like the policy as it stands and we're willing to change that policy in response, then it seems hypocrisy for us to dictate that students recite the oath as well. So I'd like to amend this policy and remove any indication that our school boards are required to state the oath of office, or sorry, the oath of citizenship during the, the morning exercises, the opening exercises.
So you want the oath out completely?
That is my.
Thank you. That's your amendment? Do you have a second, a second offer of the amendment? No second offer of the amendment? Last call, second offer of that amendment? Sorry, Trustee Quinn? Good effort. Okay, so going back to the motion. Any other questions or comments? I got a motion, I'm going to move around a second on that one? That must have, yes. Any other comments to this? Trustee Danko?
Madam Chair, I think it's a good idea for staff to say the oath. That's why I'll be opposing this policy in its changed form. I support the old policy.
Thank you. Any other comments on this? All right, so the policy as it stands, who did move it? Trustee Carabella, okay. No other comments, so we'll ask for the vote. All in favor of the resolution as it stands, the motion as it stands? All in favor? Yes, we'll go around? Okay, Trustee Carabella?
Well, I'm going to be opposed.
Opposed, thank you. Trustee Ingrid? Thank you. Trustee Ian Tomasi?
Point of order, Madam Chair. If you've seconded a motion, can you then oppose it?
I know certain trustees at this table, I will not mention their names, who've done exactly that. Okay, Trustee Carabella, you seconded it? What do you want to do here? Do you want to withdraw your second?
Yeah, I can vote, I've done, yeah, it's just...
Well, it doesn't look...
Madam Chair, she's voted already.
Yeah, okay.
She has, all right, we'll leave it then. It's not likely that she...
In favor.
In favor, in favor, okay. Trustee Michael? In favor. Trustee Marai?
In favor.
Trustee Danko?
Opposed.
Trustee Christina? Trustee Row?
In favor.
Trustee Anna Maria?
Abstained.
Trustee Quinn?
Opposed.
Thank you. So in favor? Four to three in favor. Thank you very much. The next one is 8.3, 2-34, participation in programs and courses of study in Catholic religious education. Okay, Trustee Danko, did you want to speak to this before we?
Thank you, Chair Abenda. Yes, I'd like to move policy 2-34, participation in programs and courses of study in Catholic religious education as amended.
Thank you. Do you have a second, uh? Trustee Carabella? Any comments, any discussions on this? Ready for the vote? Should be easy. Trustee Quinn?
In favor.
Trustee Anna Maria?
In favor.
Trustee Row?
In favor.
Trustee Christina? Trustee Danko?
In favor.
Trustee Marai? Trustee Michael?
In favor.
Trustee Ian Tomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Ingrid? Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Thank you very much. 8.4, V-12, blessing and official opening of a new school. Trustee Danko, would you like to speak to that?
Thank you, Chair Abenda. Yes, I'd like to move policy 5-12, blessing and official opening of a new school as amended by the Policy Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, a second, uh? Trustee Ian Tomasi? Any comments pertaining to that or are we ready for the vote? Trustee Marai?
I still think that $1,500 is an excessive amount of money. Thank you.
You were outvoted on that. Okay, thank you. We, we will note your comments. Trustee Quinn?
In favor.
Trustee Anna Maria?
In favor.
Trustee Row?
In favor.
Trustee Christina? Trustee Danko?
In favor.
Trustee Marai?
In favor.
Trustee Michael?
In favor.
Trustee Ian Tomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Ingrid? Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Moving on to 8.5, V-13, blessing and rededication of a major addition to a school. Trustee Danko?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Policy 5-13, blessing and rededication of a major addition to a school. I'd like to move that policy as amended by the Policy Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, a second, uh? Trustee Quinn? Thank you. Any comments? Anyone like to speak to this particular motion? No? All right, so we'll take the vote. Are we ready? Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Ingrid?
Favor.
Trustee Ian Tomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Michael?
Favor.
Trustee Marai?
In favor.
Trustee Danko?
Favor.
Trustee Christina? Trustee Row?
In favor.
Trustee Anna Maria?
In favor.
Trustee Quinn?
In favor.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to, the staff report, of course, has been done. So now we are moving on to information items. 10.1, student trustee update. Trustee Christina?
Okay, so the student trustees have been really busy, but it's been good. So for our student trustee update, we had a Senate meeting last Tuesday where we met with our senators and we discussed the upcoming initiatives for the year. This was a great opportunity to brainstorm with our senators. They gave us their input and their ideas for the year and it was really great to hear what they had to say. At this meeting, we primarily focused on the bullying prevention launch campaign, which will be held November 21st at Holy Trinity Secondary School. We also spoke to our senators about the connections they are making with their international students. I know that HG had a Thanksgiving dinner with their students. Other schools, they're inviting them to their Pink Day football games or school events. So they are making those connections and having a mentor relationship, which is really nice to see. We also, Ingrid, Anna Maria and I will be attending Austin Aco's Fall General Meeting, which will be held on November 2nd to the 5th. And we look forward to professional development workshops, Catholic Board Council breakout sessions and listening to guest speakers. Sam Oosterhoff will be there at this time, so we are looking forward to that. Under the pillar of believing, the grade nines at Notre Dame went on their first religious retreat where they became engaged with their faith and made new friends. Religion retreats are also available for all grades at Christ the King and our chaplain is strongly encouraging that. Many chaplains are circulating throughout the classrooms, offering guidance and support for students as the year picks up and midterms are approaching. So the chapel is often a place where students can go for that. And Christ the King has prayers read in a different language every Thursday to promote faith and multiculturalism as an intertwined area. So that's it for believing.
Under the pillar of achieving, the biggest event that we've had recently are academic awards and honor roll breakfasts. And I think I speak for all three of us when we say like, we really want to congratulate and celebrate the wonderful students we have at our Board and we're so thankful for them. ND and Assumption and all of our high schools are hosting buyout games. I know that Assumption's field hockey girls are doing really great. So a lot of football and basketball and dodgeball buyouts are happening. ND is having a student versus teacher buyout game, so where all their money goes towards hosting more school and community events and for the enjoyment of the school community. And at Corpus Christi, they are having Where in the World is Wednesday, which is a trivia game over the announcements that encourages students to learn more about the different cultures in the world. Assumption is running an initiative where they sell SPC cards, for student price cards, to raise money for our school community and is a great way to kind of get some discounts to our students. And at CTK, they are celebrating their sports team on the daily announcements to congratulate their team for all their hard work, following their games, win or lose, which I think is a really great initiative. So that's under the pillar of achieving.
And finally, under belonging, on the athletic portion, which Ingrid touched upon, Notre Dame, Assumption, Holy Trinity have all held buyouts for their sports so far. Holy Trinity, Assumption, St. Thomas Aquinas and Christ the King, among others, have hosted pink games in support of breast cancer research. At Notre Dame, they have held an International Food Day, raising awareness of different cultures and the theme of inclusivity. Assumption has held an Arts Cafe, as well as the creation of a peace and justice team, which advocates mainly for faith-led initiatives such as participation in the Pro-Life March in Ottawa. Corpus Christi has their Where in the World is Day event, which Ingrid touched upon, as well as their BU and Love You program, which is focused on diversity and inclusivity, particularly within the LGBTQ community. And as Ingrid and Christina both touched upon, a crucial part of the pillar of belonging is fostered within the variety of international student initiatives. So schools are continuing and welcoming these international students. And Student Senate is basically running these site-based initiatives such as Games Night at Holy Trinity, Thanksgiving at Assumption, and Corpus Christi's creation of a club called the Back Home Club, which basically networks international students within themselves to make them feel more comfortable within the communities while slowly integrating them with other students.
Thank you very much. Excellent reporting from our three trustees, from the students. Any questions? Comments from trustees? No? Okay. Excellent work, girls, thank you so much. 10.2, school educational field trips. Superintendent Pennelli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Please find attached a list of the approved school educational trips and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? No, all right, thank you very much. 10.3, 2017 facility renewal projects, cost reconciliation. Mr. Merrick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just updating on our 2017 facility renewal projects that we completed over the summer, updating the board on the cost reconciliation. So we had roughly 12 major projects that we completed over the summer, totaling over, up to $14.3 million that we approved back in February of 2017. The projects are now 98% complete. We have a few deficiencies that we're cleaning up, as well as some ongoing commissioning. At total, right now, we've expensed $10.8 million of that, of those funds. And we did have one project that we had to defer. The Holy Cross Roofing Project had a very complicated roof design. The building has seven or eight additions that were done in the, in the late 60s, early 70s that made the design and making all those roofs contiguous, very challenging. So it was actually our last project to tender and the pricing came in way over budget. So we ended up deferring that project because of the overage it would have caused. However, in total still, even if you take the, that 1.1 million out of the 14.3, we're still $2.4 million under budget for the total projects that we completed over the summertime. The savings were driven primarily by early tendering. We knew the pricing could be high for the summer season due to market saturation. A lot of boards had a lot of new renewal money in the market and everyone was kind of competing for the same contractors and the tight timeframe of getting all the work done in July and August. So we had anticipated that we'd, we'd have some, you know, some price hikes to compete for those, those trades over the summertime. However, we managed to beat a lot of the other boards and, you know, private, or public sector entities in, in tendering those projects. As a result, we got better pricing. The Holy Cross Roof was evidence that, you know, the longer you waited, the higher the prices went up, as we saw with the, with that roof project going way over, or being tendered at way over budget. We also encountered some design challenges with the Bishop Reading atrium skylight. You'll see on the, in the, in the table in the report, it did go over budget. We did have some significant challenges with snow loading on that roof. So we did have some modifications to make there. But the, in the end, we did get the flat roof solution that'll work for that, for that school. And it's the overages on the Bishop Reading project were offset by the savings on, on the other projects. So still a good news story that we came in significantly under budget and we get to retain those funds for, for future renewal projects at, at other places throughout the board.
Any questions, trustees? Trustee Quinn?
Thank you, three, Madam Chair. I presume that we are eliminating skylights and different roofing designs that prove to be expensive in future builds? That's...
You'll notice that our, our latest elementary school designs especially, we have clear stories, we call them, window walls, basically natural light in as opposed to horizontal glass, which, you know, was very prone to leaking, so yes.
Ryan, I have a question about Holy Cross. You obviously intended to replace the roofing system because it had a need until it became too expensive. Is it leaking? Is that, is it going to be ongoing leaking and to what extent is that or another issue going to cause the problems?
It, the leaking is actually very minimal on it. It just, we, we know from the age of it that it's well beyond its useful life. So we had it on the list of replace, you know, in, since the, the summer's gone by, we've, in September, we had our last round of capital priorities submission. So again, we're asking for a new facility for Holy Cross. So making an investment in a school where we're hopeful of, of new funding for a new building, I would say is not prudent. But it's, we're not seeing it leak significantly more than any other roofs across our Board. We do the odd, you know, major thunderstorm, major storm that causes leaks. But it hasn't been causing a lot of issues, but it is one of our oldest roofs across the Board, so.
Okay, but it's structurally sound?
Yes.
Everything's going to be fine?
Correct. It's, it's more of a, a maintenance issue or a pending maintenance issue, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? No other questions? All right, thank you very much. And so we'll go on to 10.4, 2016, 2017, school year waste generation report. Mr. Merrick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So presenting the, the waste audit data for the 2016, 2017 school year. So the ministry requires that we complete waste audits at all of our schools that are greater than 350 students. However, we feel it's important to know how all our schools are doing, so we do waste audits usually in the springtime at all of our schools. audits usually in the springtime at all of our schools. So, we completed them all back in May and June of 2017. The diversion waste, the diversion rate that you see is presented in the report. We also present the waste per student, so the KGs of solid waste that are created by each student across the entire school year. It's important to note the differences between the two. So, the diversion rate is basically data collected from a one-day snapshot, so we actually go out, we collect all the garbage from the school, and we sort it out as to what's recyclable and what's actually landfill, and do a percentage calculation. But it is, it is a one-day snapshot, so it's only one day throughout the entire year. Whereas the waste per student, we actually weigh all of the solid waste that goes to landfill from all the schools. The region, as they pick up our garbage, weighs that throughout the year, gives us the total back, and we can divide it by the number of students within the school to give us another indicator of how, how much waste is leaving each school. However, they don't, they don't give us a weight on recyclables, so figuring the diversion rate from a school is not possible because they don't actually weigh, they only weigh landfill and not recyclable. So, we have these two measures to kind of gauge how we're doing sustainability-wise at our schools. The board achieved a diversion rate of 62% across the board, which actually meets, it's our first time ever meeting the Halton Region target, and it's a 9% improvement since 2014. And, you know, our energy and environment lead, Steve Allen, is still very active in participating with schools and driving initiatives such as water bottle filling stations, source separation initiatives, e-waste collection, battery recycling, toner returns, light bulb recycling, et cetera. So, we're continually expanding the products, or the services we offer to divert waste from landfills from our schools.
Formative. A lot of information there. Questions for trustees? Trustees? Trustee Rowe?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the director. Would this be shared with the secondary school principals, this report?
Anything else? No? Okay. Thank you very much, Ryan. 10.5, 2016 EQAO and OSSLT Results. Dr. Collum Moore, Superintendent McGillicuddy, Superintendent Porcasen.
Through you, Madam Chair. Just the information report sitting before you is to provide you with a summary of results on the EQAO assessment of reading, writing, and mathematics in grade 3 and 6, on the grade 9 assessment on the OSSLT as part of the ongoing monitoring of student achievement. The report highlights the efforts to date of our mathematics action plan developed in response to the ministry's renewed math strategy. Superintendent McGillicuddy and I are prepared to answer any of your questions.
Thank you very much. Superintendent Porcasen. All right, the superintendents are going to answer all your questions on curriculum. So, what would you like to know? Any questions about the test results? Oh? Trustee Danko?
Chair Revanda, when are we just going to get rid of the textbook Math Makes Sense?
You have a problem with it?
A lot of people do.
Okay, well...
Everybody does.
There's a committee...
They're not learning math.
There's a committee that selects textbooks, and it has a process and a format that it follows, under the direction of the superintendent of curriculum. So, it's a choice that's made by consultants with expertise in the area of curriculum, and also some of the teachers that work with that particular subject area. Yes?
Chair, did the premier say she was going to remove that textbook?
I do not know.
Did the premier not say that they were going to revamp the curriculum?
Yes.
And was the textbook included on the endangered species list?
The, when the curriculum has been reviewed, revised, whatever, then the publishers work very hard and get writing teams across the province, and certainly all summer, and they come up with new textbooks to meet the new expectations. But Superintendent Porcasen can enlighten us more.
Through you, Madam Chair. Certainly, Math Makes Sense is one of the resources that's available to our teachers. We don't have a mandated textbook outside of the fact that when Math Makes Sense was published, it obviously matched the expectations of the math curriculum that was last written, I believe, in 2006, 2007. So, a revision to that program would be due regardless of the results. This is about the appropriate time when curriculum needs to be revised and revamped. From our perspective, it is but one of the resources we would be looking at our teachers using as we look at deepening our mathematical content knowledge and looking at intentional instructional practices, as well as other focuses for assessment for learning and coordinating and strengthening our mathematics leadership. These are all the things that we have in place. The days of a textbook being the only source to teach mathematics in a classroom, we would hope are long gone.
Thank you. Any other questions pertaining to... Trustee Quinn?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Just in relation to the Mathematics Action Plan and the information that they're updating the renewed math strategy plan to achieve our goals, since we're still trending in the wrong direction, I'm wondering if we could hear a little bit more about what the update to those plans will be and what the expectation is for, and the timeline for the turnaround in these, in the trend that we've seen over the last three or four years.
Trustee Porca, I'm sorry, Superintendent Porcasen?
Through you, Madam Chair. Insofar as the revisions for the Mathematics Action Plan, they should be completed within the week. As for the trend, it is a much bigger discussion and question as to what we're looking at insofar as the grade 3 and 6 results over time are indicating to us when it comes to mathematics. We definitely know that we have an issue in grade 6. We're looking at change being a three-to-five-year plan. We're also looking at the fact that we're entering into year two of our RMS plan, and we have been successful insofar as our capacity building with our teachers and principal leadership teams and the work that's beginning to take place at the schools. We hope to have this action plan reflected and posted for you within, by the end of the month, and also to take a look at examining the data and looking at reasons as to why it would be, particularly in grade 6 mathematics trending as it does, particularly as it contrasts with the results for grade 6 students in reading and writing. So, we're spending a lot of in-depth time at individual schools, most specifically targeting 16 of our schools for intense support over time, and we're hoping that the results for EQAO will improve. Having said that, EQAO is certainly not the only measure that we use to determine whether our students are doing well or not. We have report card data to consider, benchmark assessments, and many other ways of understanding how our students are learning outside of a test that takes place over a short period of time. Having said that, we do accept and understand accountability for ensuring that our teachers and students are prepared to the best of their ability and achieving to their best, and we're always looking forward to improving ourselves and looking at our next steps of learning that are important in our planning and looking forward to improvement all around.
Thank you. Trustee Quinn?
Thank you for that answer very much. And through you, Madam Chair. What is the connection between the decline in grade 6 marks and the issues that you've identified, and the number of students who enter applied math in grade 9, and looking at the 43% of them who currently do not meet the provincial standard? So, if we have a, an issue in grade 6 that shows in grade 9, we have more students who can't go to the university stream, and it builds on itself. So, what's the connection between the two, and how do we correct it?
Superintendent McGillicuddy?
Through you, Madam Chair. Our statistics over time in terms of the number of students who choose the applied stream in mathematics remains relatively unchanged at between 20 and 25% of students. And so, the current numbers that you're seeing in grade 6, and in fact, the cohort numbers that you've been seeing in grade 6 over the years have not influenced that decision in any material way. You will note that in terms of our grade 9 EQAO results, while we are not satisfied with the number of students in the applied stream who do meet the provincial standard, we are well above the provincial average in that regard. And I will point out that our number of applied students is considerably smaller than the provincial average. So, more students choose academic math in Halton as a percentage of students than do in the province as a whole.
Any other questions on that? Madam Director, Trustee Carabella also?
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm just going to prompt Superintendent McGillicuddy to talk about the cohort as they move from grade 6 to grade 9 and how they're separated out.
So, one of the things that the ministry's decision to report on applied and academic grade 9 math separately does is make it difficult to compare what happened with those students, I mean, all of the grade 9 students in grade 6, as opposed to what happens in the grade 9. You have to sort of put the math pieces together, and when you take the success rate for academic and multiply the number of students who take academic, and then add it to the success rate of students who take applied and multiply it by the number of students who take applied, in grade 9, as a whole, our grade 9 cohort has a success rate of 79.7%. Now, when they were in grade 6, that cohort in 2013 only passed at a rate of 67%. So, something's going on that's positive in grade 7, 8, and 9 to increase the overall rate of the grade 9 cohort currently, from their grade 6 number of 67 to their current number of 79. And that good news story sort of gets hidden by the fact that we artificially create a cohort in grade 9 called Applied that doesn't exist in grades 3 or 6, right? So, it's only by recombining them again, you can get a sense of the trend in math. And we think some of that is developmental. There are some questions around the provinces of whether or not some of the grade 3, sorry, grade 6 concepts in mathematics are appropriate developmentally, and so that U-shaped curve, and then doing better in 3, and then better again in 9, suggests that there may be some issues there in terms of that. And I think that that may be reflected in the fact that the ministry is, as they think, conducting their, using their term, a refresh, a review of the curriculum, but only time will tell what that may bring us.
Okay. Trustee Carabella, you had a question?
Thank you. I have a few. Just, so seeing those drop significantly over the five years from 2012 to 2017, is it easy to assess in a nutshell what that would be?
Are you referring to the OSSLT?
Uh...
Are you talking about grade 6 math?
I, my impression was when I looked at all those grids, that they were all on a decline.
Well, I would need you to ask me about a specific one, because I only, I only have responsibility for the grade 9 and grade 10, and...
Oh, I see.
...Miss Porcasen could answer about the ones in grades 3 and 6, so I'm not sure which one you would like us to address.
I don't have a specific one here. So, as a, speaking as a parent who then gets these math results of their child or whatever, and they want them to do better, and they, and they go to the extra help, like tutoring places, and that they start doing multiplications, divisions, things like that, do we have a focus on that in our, in our younger grades?
Through you, Madam Chair. There has never been a request not to take care of the basic skills and not to be practicing drills of any nature. This is something that is an expectation that we are hopeful that parents are working on at home on a regular basis with their children. To our knowledge, there isn't anyone that ever instructed parents to stop doing that. That's probably one of the most important homework benefits that parents can provide to their children, is training on those basic skills. Insofar as the trends, if we're looking at reading, writing, and mathematics, there is a trend. It's very difficult to look at this scale because we're, we're not comparing the same students. It would be certainly worthwhile when we do an exercise at our school level, we look at grade 3, 6, and 9, so we're looking at exactly the same cohorts, the same students, and then we can validly talk about how they're doing in all the areas. Whereas, when you're looking at the grid in front of you, these are all different students throughout, you know, over time. So, for example, in grade 3 reading, you know, there is, we've increased in grade 3 reading. Also, when some of our teachers see our results, they feel that some of that is greatly incompatible to the classroom report card results that they're seeing. For example, the one question about whether or not children enjoy reading in grade 3. Our teachers find it highly unlikely that only 47% of their students enjoy reading. That's not what they see. Writing is a different matter, and writing certainly we can get into. The reason why I'm talking about reading and writing and guided literacy being a focus for us is that we're trying to keep everything balanced and going at the same time. We don't want to favor math and then lose reading and writing. We want to keep all three going as best to our ability. Insofar as what we're looking at in the last five years, we can have many discussions, we've conjectured, is it developmental? Is that what happens in grade 6? Because it definitely is incompatible, if you look at even the provincial results, with the reading and writing for grade 6. And those 16 schools that we've targeted, where the students have not done well in mathematics, they're achieving in the 70s and 80s in reading and writing. So, that begs the question as to what's happening with mathematics and asking us about how we can hone in our instructional practices, et cetera, those sites, and support those teachers in the work that they're doing. Having said that, there are a lot of conversations and a lot of in-depth work that's going on in our schools, in the school improvement planning, and everyone is looking at improving in every area certainly, and trying to address everything as we go along. So, it's not that EQAO is something that we don't look at. We very much do look at it, but we also have other data to consider and the relationships that the teachers build with their students, being of the most value in the learning process, and those learning skills being the most important qualities to embed in our students.
Thank you, Superintendent Porcasen. If you could reply. Trustee Quinn?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, to the director, please. So, superintendent said that we have to look at the students as they go through the years, and we can't compare year over year because it's different students, but then don't, every year it's the same test the kids take, and every year it's the same, it's the same curriculum they're teaching. So, isn't it important that we have some standard and benchmarks for students' achievements in grade 3, 6, and 9, based on these benchmarks and these provincial standards, and require that every student, every, every age group is achieving these benchmarks?
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, we know that level 3 and 4 are the levels we want all of our students to achieve. And yes, they're different cohorts, but it also, trend data or the data that you see, I don't want to discount what Superintendent Porcasen said, having standardized a test and having levels that we're trying to get our students to every year helps us refine our practice. So, not to discount the fact that it's a different cohort of students, it's good for our staff to know what those levels are and to reach for that every year, regardless of whether it's a new cohort of students. The information we get from EQAO really helps our grade 4s and our grade 7s and our grade 10s, because those are the reports that we get. So, that's how we're targeting support for them at the school, and also targeting kids right from grade 1, 2, and 3, so that we have these standards in place and teaching standards that we know are good practices and good pedagogy. So, not to discount that it's a different cohort, we do want to continue the upward trend, and we do want to continue with good...
Good practices.
Yeah, good practices. And so, we're trying to, at the same time, model and figure out what those good practices are and do the depth, the scale, and the breadth.
Thank you. Any other questions? Trustee Carabella?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, maybe to Lisa. About the question that you asked the children, "I like to read," and then they say if they like to read or not, I just wanted to ask about that question, sort of what, I mean, I understand it's about perhaps attitude, but are the children ever asked specific questions? What do they find hard in math, or, you know, do they like fractions or things like to target?
Through you, Madam Chair. So, the student questionnaire on the EQAO test asks about student engagement in the three different areas, so reading, writing, and math. The reading questions, I've just given you a sample of two of the questions, but I can read all of them. So, they just ask, "I like to read, I'm a good reader, I'm unable, I'm able to understand difficult reading passages, and I do my best when reading in class." So, they ask these questions, but just substitute reading, writing, and math. So, those are the questions that I have in front of me, and they don't ask those specific questions that you were asking about.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella?
Thank you. One more question. So, this last paragraph in the highlights going forward, just before the conclusion...
just before the conclusion, it talks about doing a collaborative inquiry project focused on special areas of need. So, can I just have an example of what would be a collaborative inquiry project?
Through you, Madam Chair. I think that the, a collaborative inquiry project might be something that would be dedicated to a specific part of the program that when they, when teachers gather together, there is a, a problem that they would like to work out together, whether it is problem solving, as an example, of how to teach problem solving or the three-part lesson plan. And working on that together as a team as to share their practices of how they would do that in the classroom, how they perform it, test it out, try it out, work together, and come back and forth and meet together, and then bring that back into their school and share it with other teachers. So, it's looking at champions to be coming out and working in that collaborative inquiry model and to share their learning, not just among one another, but also at their own site. So, to be specific, we can certainly share examples of collaborative inquiry projects that we have done over time in a follow-up. I can do that with staff and get that report to you if you're interested. Yes, just the, perhaps a list of what?
Through you, Madam Chair. For example, the, the schools that we're looking at, Anna mentioned the sixteen schools we're going to do intensive support. Their teachers might have, I'm just guessing, they might say, "You know what? Our students are really having difficulty with fractions or with geometry and spatial sense." And then they hone down into what that particular issue is, and they work out together to figure out, "Okay, if we do this, let's try this and see if it helps, and who does it help, and how much does it help, and who are we missing?" That's the whole inquiry project. They're trying to refine their practice while supporting student learning.
Thank you. That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. So, any other questions? No, all right. Thank you very much to everyone who participated in the discussion. Ten point six, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, Parents Reaching Out Pro Grants for School Councils. Superintendent Cipriano?
Thank you. Since two thousand and six, the Ontario Government has offered parent councils the opportunity to apply for parent-reaching-out grants across Ontario. They're referred to as pro grants. Through you, Madam Chair. I'm happy to report that for the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year, our Catholic school councils in our schools have secured forty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars in grants from the Ontario Ministry for such projects as Career Path Options, Learning for Life, an evening of STEM, family, several family math nights, family fitness nights, and mental health awareness, just to name a few. These programs and events are running in, in forty-seven of our fifty-six elementary and secondary schools. And, and the programs and the schools on which there will be taking place are before you in the, in the report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Superintendent Cipriano. That is good news. Any questions? Trustee Quinn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's very good news, but does that mean that a number of schools, what, were the nine schools didn't get the funding that they had requested? And if so, do we have nine thousand dollars in our budget that we could give to the parents, councils?
I'd be interested in knowing the reason why they didn't get the funding if they applied.
Sure. And that's an excellent question, and I too wondered the same. And so, I reached out to those schools and principals. Of the nine, six did not choose to apply with their, through their school councils. It was a decision of the council. Three applied and for, for, for several reasons, did not meet the criteria of the ministry. Some had, were successful in the past, and for whatever reason, their application did not meet the requirements for approval.
So, those schools would be notified as to why they were not accepted and so could reapply?
They were notified, the, the details, the council chair would have been notified along with the principal. Sometimes it's, it's a matter of the, the area of focus, if it doesn't meet the area of focus that the ministry is, is, is centered on. And that seemed to be the reason for the three that did not, that were not approved.
Thank you very much. Any other questions on that topic? Trustee Intomasi?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I'm just wondering about the pro grants because at one time, you weren't guaranteed it just because you applied for it, even if you hit all the criteria. That there were schools who applied year after year, and they'd be successful several years in a row then. For whatever reason, I suppose they've got to move the funds around in the province. So, I just want to know, are you guaranteed now? Has anything changed in that?
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm reluctant to use the word guarantee. I do, do know anecdotally, I agree with you. Prior to my, my position in this role, it did seem that it was more challenging to secure a grant from the ministry. I recall myself, as a principal of two schools, we were hit and miss, and it seemed like our applications were, in my view, always quite solid in meeting the requirements of the ministry. So, anecdotally, I would say that the ministry does seem to be a lot more forthcoming with their, their funds for grants for schools because of, I mean, the data. We have increased every year. We've increased by five projects from last year to this year as well.
So, we're heading in the right direction. The Director?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Trustee Intomasi. Sometimes if the schools apply for sort of similar projects year over year, they might not always get that second approval. And they're very particular about it being for parents only. So, they, they comb the submissions to make sure it is definitely for parents. And that's mostly the criteria that I've been told in the past that they really, they look for.
Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you. Moving on to ten point seven, International Society for Technology and Education Conference, Dr. Brown.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I'm pleased to present this report for trustees' information in compliance with the policy to report back to the Board of Trustees when staff travel outside of the province. At the end of June, three special education staff, Jen Thompson, who is our CEA lead, Wendy Reed Purcell, who is our Coordinator of Special Education, and Anita Bader, who is one of our special education consultants, traveled to the International Society for Technology and Education Conference in Texas. I do recognize Jen Taylor is here this evening as well, who attended the conference. The ISTI Conference is one of the largest technology-focused conferences in the world, looking at comprehensive educational technology. They, it's all about professional learning, webinars, online courses, and these are available by attending throughout the rest of the school year. We, part of our funding in special ed, we have special education amount money that is focused on technology support for students. Part of that, the criteria for spending that money is for professional development. So, it's basically an envelope within the spec ed envelope, and we use that funding to send staff to this conference. Staff were exposed to vendors, keynote speakers from around the world. I think, a special note of attendance at the conference that Jen Thompson was able to, she was selected as a Microsoft Innovative Education Expert and will continue to receive exclusive PD opportunities to assist with the implementation and training staff for Microsoft products, which are a lot of the products that we use. And that was certainly a benefit for having her attend. As well, some of the information gleaned by staff came back, and Jen is also a part of our Twenty-First Century Technology Steering Committee that is here at the board. So, it was a really good opportunity to learn about innovation in technology and education and potential impacts of other students, and particularly from a spec ed perspective for special education needs for students for whom technology would support or enhance their education. Be happy to answer any questions you have or anything specific about the conference. Jen Thompson would be happy to answer them too, as she attended.
Thank you. Questions from the trustees? Trustee Quinn?
Maybe just, just a clarification or update on what the differences would be in US and Canadian opportunities for technology? The dollar cost, the exchange rate, those, those type of things. Are we at any kind of disadvantage in accessing technology because we're in Canada, not in the States, and the costs associated with it?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I'll ask John to start that answer. Opportunities for networks and professional collaboration is always a big part of why we engage in these opportunities.
It wasn't restricted just to special, special ed. It was the entire Twenty-First Century learning, correct?
The conference is probably the biggest education info, technology conference in the, in the world. We've had staff from here attend from curriculum in the past, and we've had presentations to the board too. Really, it, it came from us because we've really revamped our CEA process, getting information and technology into the hands of students at a quicker pace. And so, while we have had curriculum folks attend in the past, we wanted to send some spec ed-specific people to have that lens and be able to make those contacts.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? All right, thank you. Ten point eight, Transition Plan, Oakville Elementary Schools Verbal Update. Superintendent Overholt, Superintendent Pennelli?
Through you, Madam Chair. I will begin in regards to just a verbal report. With consolidation and closures taking place and affecting a number of our Oakville communities, transition committees have been established in those communities. Those committees are made up of three parents, two teachers, two support staff, two students, and one principal from every school, along with parish representatives from each of the local churches that are affiliated with those schools. The main goal is to make the transition as positive as possible to help in making connections to build new Catholic school communities. The, the mandate of that committee is to act as official conduit between the board and the school communities and also to provide that local perspective from the stakeholders of those school communities involved in the school consolidation and closures. The committee will be working with staff to establish recommendations on matters that include community-building activities, strategies for student integration in new, in the new schools, the dynamics of the homeschool parish connections, as well as school closing events, to name a few. Obviously, those are not exhaustive of those strategies that are going to be used, but it certainly are a number of ones that we know we have to take a look at. There are a number of activities that have already been planned and have been put in place by our communities. Just, I'll list a few of them for you. Some of the opening school masses have taken place, particularly at Saint John's School, Mr. Melonson presented a hundred and fifty daffodil bulbs to be blessed. Gave a speech to, about change and moving forward positively. The bulbs were blessed by Father Jason at the church, and the bulbs were planted later on in the month, both at Our Lady of Peace and at Saint Michael's School with those three communities as well. Saint Joseph's and Saint James have also worked together in regards to community-building events that have taken place. Confirmation and sacrament meetings are taking place with all the schools together. So, again, a number of activities have already been initiated and thought of with the schools, but this committee will further enhance those activities as well.
And I'd like to recognize that one of our objectives is in working with the principals. The principals of the schools that are affected have embraced this, that we are working together and trying to ensure that the students have as many opportunities to get to know each other well ahead of the eventual transition that will happen later on in the year. I'd like to also recognize Trustee Danko that joined us on October the fifth at the opening mass and the activities that happened between Saint James and Saint Joseph in terms of just getting a sense of the excitement with the, with the children, the staff, as they embrace this new journey together. And the same with Saint Michael's and Saint John and Our Lady of Peace. It's just wonderful to be part of that excitement, to be part of the children getting to know each other without any expectation. So, it is an exciting opportunity. As much as there was a lot of discussion at the table, at this table, and out in the communities, the, the principals and myself and the staff, we are doing everything possible to ensure that it will be a positive experience for the children, and that's what counts.
Thank you very much.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? No? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate all your work that you're doing in the transition. Miscellaneous Information, eleven point one, you have the minutes of the September eleventh CPEC meeting. Eleven point two, you also have the minutes of the September twelfth Policy Committee meeting. And I have a few reminders on upcoming dates for you. So, if you've got your calendar, a reminder that tomorrow, the Council of Chairs will meet at Saint Anne's School in Oakville at six thirty, Burlington, sorry, I moved to Burlington, at six thirty tomorrow evening for the Council of Chairs. On Wednesday, November the first, we have the Evening with Bishop Crosby. The tickets are almost sold out, but there will be one for you. So, if you would like to attend, please purchase tickets as soon as possible. There is another meeting for us on Tuesday, October the twenty-fourth, here in the boardroom at six thirty. And I sent this information out to you a while back. It's a reminder of the parliamentary procedures. Refresh your course. And I can't remember the name of the gentleman that's giving it now. Jim Lockwood, that's it. And he's going to relate Robert's rules to our own bylaws. So, that should be very interesting and informative. Also, on Tuesday, November the eighth, it's Wednesday, Wednesday, November the eighth, we have to, I guess, educate ourselves in terms of the PAU guideline reviews that has been brought out by the ministry, and also, we need to get more information on the EDCs. So, we will be having staff presenting the EDC presentation and the PAU guideline review. That will be at seven o'clock here on Wednesday, November the eighth. And I'm not sure how long that will take.
About an hour and a half to two hours.
Okay, for both of them, an hour and a half to two hours. And if you can't make it, of course, you can always call in if you're, if that's better for you. So, if you have those dates down, Saint Anne's, Burlington tomorrow at six thirty. Wednesday, November the first, Bishop Crosby. I should say, October the twenty-fourth, the parliamentary review at six thirty here. And the guidelines for the PAU and the EDC presentation on Wednesday, November the eighth. Trustee Danko?
Chair, is there any chance that the parliamentary session could be recorded for people who can't attend? Because I won't be here, and I would like to hear that one.
Can we record it, Andrea? Yes, okay. It's our guest speaker. Sure, if, I'm assuming our guest speaker has no objection, so we'll probably record it. Yes. Okay, we're good to go? All right. Okay, so, we dealt with the open question period. I would think there's a question or perhaps two pending. So, that information, the responses to those questions will be sent to the individuals who requested them, along with a copy to the trustees. All right, to everyone. There is no in-camera to go back to, a resolution regarding absentees. I'd like a mover, please, to excuse Vice Chair Tritz. Trustee Intomasi, seconded by Trustee Marai. All in favor? Thank you very much. And we are ready to adjourn, nice and early. Trustee Intomasi?
Thank you. And if you'll join me in the sign of our faith, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Thank you, Lord, for your presence with us this day. As we depart from this space now, we ask you to bless us through the remainder of the day and guide us safely home. Do not let the learning and conversations of this gathering die, but instead, may they continue to ruminate with us and bear fruit in our ministries throughout the year until we find ourselves together again. We ask this in the name of Jesus and the power of the Holy Spirit. Amen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.